I'd like to call to order the council work session, January 11, 2016. As I look around the table, I note that everyone is here tonight. We have two items on the agenda. Council will receive an update on the expanded graffiti abatement strategy, which will allow for the city to use a contractor to ensure prompt removal of graffiti on private property. And I see we already have Christina Plant, Neighborhood Services, to coordinate. Oh, well, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Christopher Baker, Development Services, and pleasure to be here with you. I'm gonna just briefly introduce Christina, which you all know, obviously. But Christina works in very close proximity with our code department folks. Gail, John, and Pam, by the way, we asked them to be here tonight because they do really a lot of legwork for the city, a lot of thankless work, and very much don't get a lot of recognition for the hard work that they do that really does make a difference to people's quality of life. So I wanted to ask and invite them to be here tonight to see and participate and hear the conversation that we have with the council this evening. So as a matter of note, what we're talking about tonight is the expansion of a strategy to address graffiti in the city of Goodyear. As you all are aware, the Graffiti Busters program has become inactive for a variety of different reasons. But graffiti continues in the city, and so it needs to be addressed. And working collaboratively with Gail, Pam, and John, City Attorney's Office, as well as PD, with Christina's leadership and efforts, we've hatched a new, if you will, a strategy to deal with graffiti, and that's what we want to walk you through with tonight, so that you all can be informed and aware of how we're dealing with this issue in the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Christopher said, the Graffiti Buster program has been disbanded, and it's really not sustainable. I can go into a little more detail with our current staffing levels. But we know how important protecting the quality of life in Goodyear is, and we know how critical light is to promoting a healthy quality of life and making people feel safe and good about their neighborhoods. And so we're not asking for any money, and we're not asking to change any city codes or ordinances. We just want you to be aware of how we plan to expand our existing resources and leverage them to help citizens who may be victims of graffiti and to expedite response times in handling graffiti abatement. So, let's see, oh, it's, there's a lot of like who, what, where, when, why we came to this conclusion, and it's not exactly linear to be able to explain in one quick sentence. So I want you to know what you have to look forward to, is I'll talk a little bit about national and local graffiti research trends, our current response to graffiti, and what the current graffiti situation is like in Goodyear as best we can tell, our planned enhancement, and how it will work. And then want to open it up to comments to you for any thoughts that you may have on that. So the appearance of graffiti heightens resident fear and is often perceived as a sign that a downward spiral has begun in a community. And Goodyear really prides itself on offering residents an exceptional quality of life. We know that the appearance that suggests apathy and neglect not only attracts vandals and other forms of delinquency, but leaves people not feeling good about that quality of life. So when people see graffiti, they think they're in a bad neighborhood. And really, if it is left unabated, graffiti sends the signal to bad guys that nobody is watching, and so more delinquent and criminal activity can occur. Research shows that there are four primary motivators for graffiti vandalism: fame, rebellion, self-expression, and power. And we also know from a survey of taggers who have been arrested or caught that the fear of getting caught was the primary motivator that might prevent them from committing an act of vandalism like that, and would get them to stop. So put that together, and I really think it builds on the confidence in our strategy that prompt removal and persistent removal of graffiti, combined with outreach and education that promotes teaching the value of respecting the property of others and your part of being in a community larger than yourself, and law enforcement and prosecution for criminal activity will be effective in abating graffiti going forward. So far, well, as of December 10, we had 55 reports of graffiti on private property in fiscal year 16. And graffiti on city assets tends, is removed by a contractor or city staff. Graffiti on private property, private property owners are notified that they have graffiti on their property, and they're given seven days to remove it per city code. And then, as we mentioned, the volunteer-based Graffiti Buster program has been inactive and/or disbanded. Chuck Watson, as you all know, was an incredible steward in getting that program going. He took intense responsibility, I learned in interviewing him about this, for the like regular operations of making that possible. And he took a lot of the load that ordinarily would be a staff responsibility, such as scheduling volunteers, supply management, securing storage facility, ordering supplies, so, and recruiting volunteers. So I did meet with Chuck to brainstorm with him what would be a good response or substitute that he would be comfortable and supportive of, and also what his priorities were when he started that program and what they are still. And his priorities are quick removal and quality, so that as little trace as possible that graffiti ever existed was there. And he was supportive of this recommendation. He has his grandkids, otherwise he would be here right now. We, looking at HTE, which is where code enforcement keeps their complaints or reports, you can see that over the last three and a half years, graffiti reports range from 110 to 175 incidents. And also, we've been using a contractor to remove graffiti on public property, and we've been paying them anywhere between $430 and $821. It should be noted that the reports of graffiti in HTE may or may not be inclusive of that on public property. And we've discovered that we don't really have a cohesive gathering point for where graffiti, how much graffiti we have exactly. And so we believe that this expanded strategy is going to help with that because it will ensure that PD gets notified about existing graffiti so that we can get reports and have the most evidence necessary when we do prosecute, and also for, in terms of public property assets and the consequence for our neighborhoods. So that's going to be one favorable outcome as a result of this new process as well.
Joanne?
So looking at this, so I gather that what you're saying is the numbers are a little skewed because you're not real sure, some of them may not be inputted in here on the public numbers. But, you know, at first blush, when you look at it, you think, the program we've had is working. It's obviously, you know, doing something. It's keeping it, not at bay, but it's going down. It's in a positive direction when you look at what's occurred here. And obviously Chuck was a champion for this. And so as we go through here, and so when we say that it's been, graffiti busters have been inactive or disbanded, do we need a new champion, a new team? Is that part of this, or is you're going to get into some other ideas here?
Yeah, I'm going to get into that. And I guess I should clarify, Graffiti Busters removed graffiti on private property. The city removed graffiti on public property. So nothing changed in terms of public property necessarily, except for we'll be doing a better job recording how many incidences of it were and making sure we have police reports for vandalism on public property as well. The importance of sharing those numbers with you was more to give you the scope that, exactly what you hit on. Our numbers are low, and this is why we believe we can accommodate this within our existing budget, and we don't need anything from council at this time. If you look at this slide, you can see how we compare to other cities. And again, it's an incomplete count likely of graffiti, but even still, if you doubled it, tripled it, quadrupled it, we are faring way better than our neighbors in the Southwest Valley. And our expanded strategy is designed to preserve that and to hold the line and be responsive to our resident property owners as victims when they are targets of graffiti vandalism, while leveraging our ability to quickly and professionally remove it while remaining within the existing budget. Volunteers, for example, if we did have a champion, that would be great, but they are more limited in painting out graffiti, for example, rather than being able to maybe power wash or use chemicals to remove it without further liability to the city. So using the contractor is a win-win-win solution, and using volunteers to report graffiti to us is the way to go.
In addition to that, if I can add something, Christina, the process for notification of staff, of instances of graffiti through public stuff, or calling as well from the citizens, we also document the tag and pass that on to the police department in case they're caught in the future. That way, as Christina indicated, can be used as evidence and potential prosecution. So that's an important thing, and the expanded strategy is even going to take this a little bit further as well. So we're actually going to be providing more resources for potential prosecution in the future.
I like that idea. How about the rest of you? Someone having to, results of their artwork is going to be getting the attention of the city.
Thank you. So currently, the city's contractor is only dispatched to remove graffiti from public property or city-owned property. With the expansion, we're adding the option to remove graffiti on private property visible from public view. So say an alley in north subdivisions or historic Goodyear has graffiti on it, we could handle that quickly instead of trying to round up volunteers or getting the property owner to acknowledge they are responsible for that part and paint it out. But we don't want to change any ordinance because we are not making it the city's responsibility to paint out graffiti. We just want that option available to us. If we can respond in a timely fashion within our existing budget, then we want to be able to help our residents who are victim of a crime.
Great, Joe?
Yeah, I really appreciate the efforts, especially Chuck, who was the champion of all this, is to remove that graffiti as quick as possible, because the look and feel of our city is important for not just bringing businesses in, but for our residents as well. The question I have is probably more legal than anything else, and again, I want it off as fast as possible. Are there any kind of caveats when we get into private property, even though it's in public view of going and removing? Do we at least have to notify the owner? Is there anything that we have to do that slows us down as far as taking care of that that's in public view?
Mayor, Council, I think she's going to cover that in just a few minutes.
Okay, alright, okay.
That's a great question. Yes, there are. And so the way that we've worked out with legal to handle that is, we're going to be sending, we're going to be using an opt-out, we're going to be using an opt-out opportunity. So following an opt-out opportunity, the city can remove graffiti on private property using the contractor. Also, we'll be designing and implementing a public education campaign and incorporating a call to action for citizen volunteers to report graffiti. And then we'll be continuing with enforcement and prosecution. So going on to that opt-out part, what we're going to do is send out a letter. So hopefully by the end of this week, using the email blasts and also regular mail to all the HOA property managers, letting them know that this is our plan. And if we happen to see graffiti and we're able, we plan to paint it out if it's visible in the public view. And if they don't want us to do that, to let us know at any time. And we will keep a log of where not to remove the graffiti. On a home that's not a part of an HOA, if there's graffiti, we'll have a door hanger that we leave that says, someone's going to be by within the next 24 to 48 hours to remove the graffiti. If you don't want us to do it, please just sign this card and leave it on your door, and the contractor will see it and not paint out graffiti. But know that if you don't want us to remove it, you have seven days to remove it, so please remove the graffiti within seven days. That will be way more efficient than trying to secure some form of authority too in advance. So let's see, beginning February 1 is when we plan to, if graffiti is observed by code enforcement or reported, start using those tools. And when the contractor goes out there, they will use the best, least intrusive method, whether it be power washing, chemical, or paint. And they will be able to color match, which is something that volunteers are not able to do. So that's good as well. And then property owners are encouraged to file a police report. And the graffiti contractor, when they go out there, they take a before picture and an after picture, so we will have a record of the quality of the job that was done, and we will have a record of the vandalism. And we can go in and label those images by the tagger's name, for example, so that later, at a later date, when the tagger is arrested, we can pull a report of that particular tagger's tags, and all of those people are able then to be victim, which could aggravate charges. So Goodyear is not a place to be committing acts of graffiti vandalism.
Sherry?
So for those repetitive ones, are we going to keep a chart on how much we spend so we can get the restitution from when we finally get them?
Exactly. The contractor keeps the GPS location, the before-after picture, and the cost that it was.
Joanne?
Excuse me, so to piggyback on Sherry's comment, when we have, let's just say they're juveniles, or, well, anybody, but let's pick on juveniles. If they're the ones that are doing this and they've been caught, obviously, the restitution is one thing. But do we have a strong community service aspect to this, that making them go out and paint fire hydrants, whatever, do something in that regard to make them, you know, give back to their community also? Is there something?
Is that a PD or courts answer?
It's a legal question.
Correct. Can we make it? Can we make it something that our city does with these kids?
Mayor, Members of Council, most of the juvenile cases are not handled in the city of Goodyear courts, they're handled at juvenile courts. Traditionally, we have not had a lot of community service performed in the city, and there are liability reasons for that.
Really? Oh, okay.
Joe?
It's my understanding with PD, and correct me if I'm wrong, and there's an aggressive charge, or when it comes to graffiti, you try to add up the accounts because typically...
Let's bring the chief up a minute, okay? Joe, finish your question now.
Is that correct, Chief, where, you know, you don't try to get just one count, you try to get multiple accounts so that when you go into court, you've got something of substance that hopefully will take them off the streets for a while if they're regularly tagging areas. Is that true?
Yeah, Councilmember Pozzillo, yeah, we take into consideration all the cases, and many times, these are multiple, you know, these have offended multiple times. So we take in all that in account and put multiple cases together when we can, which will enhance the prosecution.
Yeah, from my perspective, you know, if it's somebody who's doing it over and over again, I'd rather see them somewhere where they won't do it again, as opposed to being back out on the street. So from my perspective, that active and aggressive prosecution is what I personally like to see when it comes to this, because to me, it's our gateway. It's what our community is, it's why people come here. It's our quality of life. For anybody who's disrespecting property and painting, et cetera, I'm hoping that we take the max we can on those individuals.
Thank you, Chief. Sherry?
And I kind of remember that also there's been problems, other parts of the valley where people, some's painting, there's some people out there with markers, some people scratching, some people with those sticky things. Do we have a way to remediate those? Is it the same process as well?
Mayor, Council, it would be the same process. The contractor is much more equipped than city staff is to deal with the variety of different vehicles by which the graffiti takes place, if you will. The contractor, that the city has an existing contract with, by the way, also does this for ADOT, the city of Phoenix, they color match, they have chemicals. So they have a greater palette, if you will, no pun intended.
Oh, that's just always, so when they take the Sharpies and they write on all the stuff, they can do that too?
Yeah, they can do all that, yes. They can deal with all those different mechanisms that you and I could sit here and think of, that you could tag with, they can remove.
There are some exclusions. We will not be removing graffiti within gated communities, as that's private, private property.
We're going to have to tell our neighborhood right away on that one. Molly, you get on that, okay?
Also, we will not be using the contractor to remove graffiti on fire hydrants, but we will be removing graffiti on fire hydrants. And in working with the water department, it's important to them that they have an opportunity to inspect fire hydrants that have been vandalized with graffiti, to make sure there wasn't any further vandalism that occurred. So in that same sort of spirit, construction sites that don't have a C of O are not included. Those properties should be secured, and the property owners should know and care and figure out how to further secure their property if they are being targeted for graffiti vandalism. And then, commercial property owners and homeowners are still responsible for removing graffiti on buildings or areas within their property.
And how are they made aware of that?
If it's not something they just observe and take care of, and it gets to code enforcement, then code enforcement will issue a notice to them.
Joanne?
This is a little off graffiti, but it's still vandalism. Do we have, I'm not sure if, you know, part of the, I mentioned a few weeks ago, I really believe in the broken window theory. And, you know, graffiti is still part of that theory. But really, in the case of broken windows, I mean, do we have that kind of, I mean, I guess that goes back into code, but it's far more costly to, I'm sure, take care of in that circumstance. And, you know, I know we probably don't, not tallying it up like we do with graffiti tagging and things like that, so I don't know that it's even an issue. But I'm just curious on what the strategy is when you have issues like that in another way, beyond just tagging and...
If the, Mayor, Councilmember, if the issues on a property are beyond graffiti, then we deal with them in a variety of different methods, from weeds to demolition by neglect, if you will, to lack of property maintenance, to broken windows, vacant homes. They each have a different strategy that code enforcement uses, and they each have different legal protocols that we have to follow. Because going on somebody's property to condemn a house, for example, or a shed, is much different than going after somebody for weeds or an unlicensed vehicle parked in their yard. So there's different strategies and different legal methods that we have available to us.
Christina, do you find, if it's a private property, that someone has a broken window, and they don't have the money to replace that window, are there, do you have resources that you give out, or is there some kind of...
No, we don't. One alternative would be the individual could look to local church groups or their faith community if they're a part of one, or they could look to, if they qualify financially, the cap office to assist with their utilities, and the money that's freed up from that could be applied towards the window. But I haven't had any calls or anything about that, and mostly if I, I think if window, broken windows have been observed, they're usually on a vacant home.
Vacant home, gotcha. Okay, thanks.
So just real quick, the next steps, we're going to print out the letter and do an email blast to property managers, and that'll occur annually to account for any attrition or turnover in the property management company. It'll give me an opportunity for them to have me as a contact in their database also. We're going to begin printing and implementing the door hangers on private, individual residence beginning February 1. I'll be working with communications and other departments to design and implement a public education campaign, and we'll track any presentations that are done on graffiti. And then there is a storage facility with the equipment that was used by graffiti busters, so we're going to have facilities come over and help us vacate that by putting any of those materials to use. They'll get dibs after that, parks, and other departments will have an option, volunteer services, to see if they can put it to use. We'll be out of there by October 31. I've Jan, January, and October, yeah. So with that, we, like I said, I'm not asking for anything of you, just want you to be aware of this because we know how important preserving Goodyear's quality of life is to you. So are there any additional comments or questions?
Carolyn?
I do, I, this is kind of a semi quasi-comment and quasi-question. It's my understanding that we had tried to use contractors in the past and that they had not proved reliable because, for whatever their reasons, maybe they weren't ramped up to take care of the quantity of issues that came up. So my, I guess my request then, or comment, is I think in maybe four to six months, as a councilperson, I would like an update to see how it is working.
I think it's good to track, yes. Molly?
Well, I first of all want to thank Chuck Watson, because his program was really too good to be true. It was such a wonderful grassroots program that was to the benefit of all of Goodyear. And he worked tirelessly with no pay, no compensation, and probably not a lot of thank yous, to be out there within 24 hours when graffiti was reported. And I know we did a lot of fundraisers to raise money for his paint, and I'm not sure if Brian or Chief, but we did have the dunk tank, remember that? And we did the dunk everybody so that we could get money for paint. And it's because of him and his efforts is why our city looks so good. Because when graffiti is removed immediately, sometimes that is a deterrent because their art is not on display anymore, it's gone. But I do want to do a thank you to code. Y'all are amazing. I use this application all the time, as you well know, we're all on first-name basis. And when we were out delivering the fill-a-need on that Saturday while we were working in the neighborhood, I was checking out the houses, taking pictures and sending in reports. And I did find graffiti going into the north subdivision. Part of it, I believe, either belonged to the gas company or the water company or something, because it was a different sign. But we had a huge piece of graffiti on the back of the wall of the house on the corner. Do you remember that one, going down central? And the only complaint that I really have is that in using the application that is on my phone, we're only allowed one picture per complaint. And this word zen plus other stuff at the bottom, if I stood way far away, you couldn't see the other stuff at the bottom, so I wanted to take several pictures, but that would have meant four reports for the same address. So I didn't do that. I wanted to, but I didn't do that. So if somehow we could allow... So if somehow we could allow the public to be able to take more than one picture of the incident, because it depends on what it is, it could be very spread out, or whatever. But anyway, we thank you, and I did drive by, and it's gone, and the neighborhood is just thrilled to death, because that was really worrisome to them, because they don't want to see graffiti in their neighborhood at all. Our councilwoman, Holman, lives in that neighborhood, and she certainly doesn't want to see it. But we do thank y'all so much, and thank you for the job you're doing. And I did turn in an abandoned house, and Joanne, I turned in a broken window, and I turned in a whole bunch of stuff, and they were right on it, and I don't know what all they had to do to do it, they just need someone to report it to them, so that they could do their job, because it could be something that they did not see. And then I even called Lauren and said, "When is the next bulk trash in this neighborhood, because someone has dumped all of his cabinets out in the street?" Remember that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So Lauren told me when it was, and I went by after bulk trash, and it was gone. But had it not been gone, they would've gotten another report person from me, so. And I appreciate having the GPS on that reporting, because sometimes I do not know where I am, there's no street signs, like when I'm reporting the grocery carts, or something else, and I'm in the corner, and there's not a street sign, and I don't know exactly where I am. And if I don't give some kind of address, it used to not let me report it, so I'd have to call you and tell you about it. But thank you, Christine, for trying to continue this program, it is so important. And I want to thank PD for jumping on these reports that we give you, so that you can keep track of these taggers. I know we had a huge, huge problem in Rio Vista, right behind Pebble Creek, in the culvert, and in the big drain pipes, and it was, it really was excessive, and police was all over it, and we appreciate that, and we thank them. And I know we have to work sometimes with Roosevelt Irrigation District, and we have to work with so many different entities, but we thank you, and I appreciate y'all giving us an update. And I think as we go out into the community and talk to our neighborhoods that we deal with, we ought to be telling them about this program, so the more you let us know what we're supposed to say, that we're speaking in one voice, you know, and not making it up, to make it sound good, that would be great, because I could talk to Carolyn's homeowners association, and she can do historic Goodyear, and we can tell them and let them know y'all are gonna be coming through the neighborhood with this program. But thank you very, very much. And I hope we, I know we thank Chuck, and I hope we send him a note or something, just to thank him, because he really was an amazing person.
Molly, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think they've got a fourth member of that team over there, so.
They do.
You're not on the paycheck for the city, but we appreciate that, Molly, because you are out and about. Joe?
No, I was very quickly echo what Carolyn and Molly had mentioned. And again, it's really important to our quality of life, I appreciate you staying on top of this. And like Carolyn had mentioned, maybe three to four months, just give us an update where that is. Because, you know, I've had people visit from out of town, and they think this is a brand-new city. Why? It's pristine, it's well-kept, and that's why I'm a firm believer when it comes to the maintenance of our medians, and how it looks, and the graffiti, that that sends a message out there that we're an up-and-coming city, not a city in decline. So it's, to me, it's very, very important. I'm sure the rest, make sure this is pristine, and the graffiti is one we want to get off. So thank you very much, I appreciate your efforts.
Sherry?
Yeah, I want to echo that as well, because what I notice is that you don't see a lot around here. That means you're getting it off so quickly that it's not like you can tell, you know, it's not like you pass it every day. If you see something, it's gone relatively quickly, and it doesn't really catch your eye too much. So that's, thank you very much for that, for taking care of that. And I did report a house to them, I'm not quite as active as Molly, but I did report a house, and the city took care of it up in Estrella, it was a burnt-out house. They took care of it, they found the owner, it was a lot of work, and I appreciate that, but the neighbors appreciate that, too. So I just want to thank you and your whole team there. When we get the door hangers or something, could you send us a copy of that, like a PDF file, so we know what's going out, and, you know, so if someone says, then we'll have it kind of handy to say, "Here's the number to call," or whatever?
I'll give you a printed copy when they're ready.
Oh, that'd be perfect, thank you.
Any others? Well, I just want to thank you, it's, you know, this is a big quality of life issue for citizens. And so we can't continue to go out and tout our city, and tout those awards we've gotten if we don't keep it up. So it's gotta be depressing for you on occasions, when you think, "Again." You know, so thank you for your good work, and you can see you got the attention of the council here on this subject matter. Okay, and Chris, and thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher, it was very nice, you were up the table tonight, thank you.
Thank you all.
Alabama.
No, really?
I didn't hear what he said.
He's not responding, no.
Go Bama.
You had to do that, huh? Okay. All right. The next item. I could see your face, you wanted to say something, so you did get that moment, okay. The next is to receive an overview of emergency management in the City of Goodyear, and the role of mayor and council. Othello Nubel, emergency.
Reverend.
I was going to say, boy, did you jump the, on that. I attended his swearing-in, as you might call it, and so, yes. So I'll still use Othello Nubel, but we all know, congratulations, Pastor.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and council, city manager, Rorick, or do I just call you Legal? Whatever you want to call it. Very quickly, thank you all, that showed up, and thank you for your all wishes, I really do appreciate it. We're gonna be as brief as possible, just want to, I haven't been before the council in a while, just to talk about emergency management and emergency operations center. So we just want to briefly touch on it, we'll move right along, so you can get to the football, oh, you won't be able to make it to the football game, I'm sorry. So these are some things.
You can share with us, Tim, okay.
I'll send in text. So we're just gonna briefly go over the emergency operations plan, our EOC, the responsibilities in emergency, as well as the examples for emergency deployments. As you all know, we do have the city code, Article 3-7, and our sole purpose for the emergency operations plan is to reduce the vulnerabilities that we see. I get often joked about by Lisa in our department, about me being in the water drains, in the flood drains, trying to see what's going on, if anything may be impacted, but I'm a visual type of person. And we want to make sure also that the things that we may see, we can do it in a rapid manner, so that that recovery process can be taken care of as quickly as possible. As we know, if people are going to be impacted negatively, we want to do what we can as quickly as possible, to make sure that they're taken care of. There is a type on this that should be 040511, the emergency operations plan, isn't that old. The only reason you haven't had the emergency operations plan for 2015 in front of you is we're moving to a different format and a different process. So I believe you all did get a copy of the draft, and I'll be in front of you in a couple of months, to bring that, to have it approved, so that is moving forward. It is still a all-hazard, multi-functional plan, so we're looking at that as well. And then, it just talks about the process of our people, our property, and our environment. The plan has multiple annexes to it, and we're actually moving to ESF, the emergency support functions. And so, with it being an all-hazards plan, we're looking at natural, as well as man-made disasters, and those disasters that may impact our city, even if they're not within the city boundaries. So we, so it's a lot of information, but it's sort of, with the annexes, it breaks it down specifically, if it's something that's going, that may be impacting our city. Yes, ma'am?
Quick question, as I was looking at this list, something that obviously we have as a positive in our city, but could be a potential hazard, is the I-10, or the 303, whichever. So hazardous issue, I can see if there was tanker trucks, or something like that, that was a major accident, but I'm curious if there was just a major pileup. Not a hazardous situation, but a major pileup, where you had, you know, obviously, we're not gonna have snow-packed roads where people are stuck, but say it's in the middle of the summer.
Right.
And you have that, is that something where we would have a unit that, you know, we would put together a plan that would go out to help these people that are stranded on this freeway, or does McDoc come in? I don't know who's protocol is that goes to, even though it's in, say, in our stretch of the city. How does that work, if it's not a hazardous incident, but it's still a life situation?
Councilmember Osborne, first of all, that I-10 is a state asset, so DPS would be impacted there, but if there's a medical emergency, then obviously, City of Goodyear Fire Department would be a part of that process. So we're looking at, that would be the city, as well as the state, involved in that process.
I mean, if they were stranded in the middle of the day in August, you know, and that's what I was just curious about, how that works, so.
And once again, it would depend on the length of time, how long would they be out there? Would it be something that we would activate the emergency operations center for? Possibly not. If it was something that was gonna be elongated, then possibly so. And that would be coordinated with talking with Department of Transportation, our police department, as well as our fire department, in coordination with that, with that collaboration, then we would make a determination, do we need to activate the emergency operations center, and how would that process go? So obviously, our arterial streets would be impacted. Unfortunately, it would flow off in here, but we would then set up a way for them to easily move through the city, and possibly get back on the freeway further down the street.
Molly?
One example, Tim, could be a bus rollover.
Yes.
We could have a bus rollover, and then we would have multiple units from multiple cities.
We could.
With multiple everything, plus, but DPS would be the primary.
Well.
And ADOT, with you doing medical, you know, it's gonna be many, many.
Right.
What am I trying to say?
Well, what's gonna happen, there's going to be, I'm sorry, Councilmember Campbell, first of all, I will not be doing medical, if I'm out there, we're in real trouble. So that is.
No, you're right, I've been on CERT with you, so we don't do medical, you're right.
So once again, that is DPS, that is the fire department, more likely, there's gonna be Avondale, there's going to be Buckeye Valley, all surrounding, as you all know, we have the automatic aid.
Because of the multiple.
Correct, correct. But even something such as that, it wouldn't really even impact the emergency operations center. Now, they would inform me of it, but even a bus rollover would not activate.
No, but that's what I was saying, because it has nothing really to do with our city, it's on an interstate.
However, it could impact us indirectly.
Right.
And so we have to look at the residual effect of that, if you will, or cascading effect and events.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to listen to you, Tim, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
You're very welcome.
As you all already know, we have a wonderful emergency operations center, and we've actually used the Councilmember Osborne, so I just want to put that out there.
Thank you.
And so, wanted to put that out there.
You've used it?
I'm sorry, yes.
We've already had a.
Last year, yes, ma'am, last year when we had the flooding, we activated our emergency operations center, and so police and fire was in there. Maybe that's the reason Deputy City Manager Bob Beckley left, because he showed up there, I don't know. So, but it actually worked well. We had McKnight from the streets come in, and really did a very good job. One of the things that we really want to stress about the emergency operations plan is the function of it, is, as you can see by the PowerPoint, we're just trying to collect and analyze information, we're trying to, we have to be fiscally responsible, we just can't be calling people in overtime, or things like that. So we have to measure, who are we calling in, why are we calling in, and for what, what are we trying to do there? And once again, since we have automatic aid and mutual aid agreements already in place, most of that is already taken care of. These are just some of the things that we can look at, as why we may want to consider activating the emergency operations center, and the activation, what will it take for us to get to that point, to also inform you all, to make you aware of what's going on in the city? And so when the conditions of a local emergency or disaster are present or imminent, and the need for the outside assistance can be anticipated. So we work very well, very closely with the county, Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management, and we also work with our municipalities within the West Valley, so we have very good relationships there.
Mayor? So, if you, if you activate it, I know you would let our mayor know, do you let council know it's been activated, so that we're, we don't have to know what exactly you're doing, but I think we would want to know it is activated, because that means something's going on.
Well, Councilmember Campbell, I would not, the city manager would be, and we'll speak about that, yes. I will share with my boss, who shares with the city manager, who passes that information on, and we're gonna address that very shortly in the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So there are different modes, as far as the activation of the emergency operations center. Right now, it's in standby mode, and then there's partial, limited activation, then we have a full activation, always driven by what the event or the incident may be. For instance, this right here looks horrible, looks terrible, but unfortunately, that's everyday business, so that would be no activation. This right here, as we see, would bring in help from outside, but still, standby, I'm made aware of what's going on, and so they're keeping me in the loop, but still no activation. We're looking at something like this, because we have that wildland-urban interface, fire may impact our neighbors, our residents, our citizens, we may have to move them or not. So we're looking at activating the emergency operations center, informing the necessary players in that, to let them know what we may be doing, so that they are already ahead of the game. One of the things I try and do is make sure to let the county emergency management know ahead of time, if there's a possibility of activating the emergency operations center, so they are already be aware of any assets that we may need from them. We do have an.
Sherry, excuse me, Sherry?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to kind of get an idea, so the wildfire, that would be something along the lines where they're evacuating, like what you saw in California type of thing, not just your standard, you know, brush fire.
Correct. Yes.
Just so the public knows when they see the fire, we're talking a big fire, where you're moving residents out of, say, Estrella or something.
Right, if that, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lortana, if there's that possibility even, the fire department and police department have done a very good job of keeping in the loop, so if there's a possibility, we want to be looking at talking to the American Red Cross ahead of time, where we might move them to, and what is the process of move them out, so opposed to waiting till the last minute and doing it. Thank you for pointing that out, appreciate it. Because we do have the Phoenix-Goodyear Airport, we also have to be aware of incidents such as these, and so obviously, this will not only bring out, have us call the emergency operations center for the county, but more likely, it's probably gonna take more than our fire department to address something like that. And no one's ever seen this in the City of Goodyear. So I don't know if this is a hobo or a dust storm, but either way, we would, something, if it's long-term, once again, we have people that drive out here that's not familiar with them, and so different accidents can happen, it can be a large pileup, as we've spoken about also. Even though information is put out over the radio, over the news, and even on our website, people are still not familiar with this, so we have to be aware of these as well. So who's responsible? You all are. I'd just like to point that out, during an emergency, who's responsible, to your question, Councilmember Campbell, the chief executive officer, if you want to look at that perspective, would be the city manager, and he is that liaison, if you will, between us and you. So we would be making sure that information is being pushed to him, so that you all don't have to worry about calling us and asking us what's going on. If it's moving the way it should, he'll give you so much information, he will probably tell someone from the emergency operations center to stop calling him, so if then, if it's moving the way that we want it to.
Joanne?
No offense, Brian, but you, though, will have an incident commander, correct?
Yes.
That would be relaying information to the city manager, whether that incident commander, incident commander is yourself, someone in public works, wherever it may lie within that jurisdiction, right? And then it, or department, I should say, not jurisdiction, but then, that's how it kind of goes through the chain of command, right?
Correct. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Osborne, if it is a large enough event, then the incident commander may not be able to, it may be a liaison officer that is speaking with the city manager, to give him that on-the-spot information of what's going on, because there may be some policy decisions that you all will have to make. And we want to, once again, make sure that the city manager is aware, so he can pass that information on to you all, and as quickly as possible. And once again, if I'm the incident commander, we're in a lot of trouble.
Oh, stop.
I'm just there to make sure that information flows, and that we coordinate from the emergency operations center to where the incident is happening, so we can, we can bring on the resources that we have available. Hey, it must be timed. So, as you can see, the mayor designated legally, if there's going to be a declaration of an emergency. so we can, we can bring on the resources that we have available. Hey, it must be timed. So, uh, as you can see, the mayor is designated legally. If there's going to be a, a declaration of an emergency, you don't like that picture? There's going to, I would just like to say, I didn't select the pictures, I just asked for them. Um, but if there's going to be a, a need for a declaration, Mayor, then the documentation would obviously be brought through legal first. Um, and, and it's already in the plan. It's one of those you can pull out and just fill in the blanks. But it'll be brought through legal and the policy group. So if there's a declaration necessary, that would be a streamlined process. And the hope, the expectation is that the stra, the strategy, uh, strategic guidance, communication coming from the mayor and council through the city manager will help us in moving in the direction to where we understand what our limitations or our boundaries are a, as we move forward. Now, if you see that little note at the bottom, it says a room in a strategic location near the EOC. It is your EOC. However, Madam Mayor, um, I've, in, in my experience in the past, emergency operations centers work better, um, when there is no mayor or council's presence simply because the focus needs to be on what's happening out there opposed to if we're trying to appease the mayor and the council. I hope I said that politically correctly enough.
We respect that statement because it's the same way when any event happens in the city, whether it's a fire, whether it's an accident. If all council people are immediately texting or engaging our police officers or our fire, it does slow the process down. So we're, I think this council is aware that we need to hold that responsibility.
Great, thank you. And you have been very supportive of myself and the emergency management process. I just want to get that in there. Um, believe it or not, it can get a little bit chaotic in the emergency operations center. So our personnel is very important. So we do try and split this up into operational periods if it's something that's going to go beyond a 24-hour process. And we do have plans in, uh, in place to, to hopefully deal with those types of things as well. So this is what our, the organizational chart looks like. As you can see, mayor and council, legal, your policy group, myself, I'm in the emergency operations center and this is how we're broken down as far as the incident command system is set up. And it, we, it's a modular process. Uh, it doesn't always have to be that, that large to start off with. It can be smaller. We just would work with what we need and then build from there. These are some things that occur, can occur. Uh, we've seen the flooding before. We've seen the fires. Uh, we've seen some of all this in our city. So, but these are the things that we have to be aware of. So, so often, I'm just going to flip through these calls, they're just sort of telling the story. So often we hear about, uh, police and fire, but we really don't hear about public works and utilities and the role that they play streets. And so it's important that we understand that it's not just police and fire, but parks and wrecks play a role in this as well. While law enforcement give us the intelligence and they, they do the responding, uh, it's important that we know that they're not out there by themselves. The emergency operation plan, as we move forward, we will be doing, um, tabletop exercises with some of the, uh, departments within the city. So that's coming soon. Um, we've talked about the use of the EOC. It's in standby mode, um, whenever we need it. It's already, it's ready to go, up and ready to go. And then we do have participation at, from the local all the way to the national level with our exercises. As a matter of fact, there's one in March with Palaverdy and the, um, Reception and Care Center at Desertats High School that is happening very quickly. So do you all have any questions of me?
Questions? Bill?
I don't know if it's really a question or not, but just a, a nugget of information that, uh, the mayor of Cambridge, Massachusetts reported after the, uh, the Boston bombing suspects held, holed up in, in Cambridge. They had the big shootout, the police officer was killed and, and then the two, uh, folks were, were caught. And the days following that, even though the emergency was theoretically over, but the search had gone on for several days, um, the mayor found herself really at a disadvantage because the media didn't want to, they weren't getting anything from the police chief. They weren't getting anything from the fire chief. The city manager was, took the position of, "We're not going to communicate." So the mayor became then the face and really was accosted in the parking lot because there's a parking spot that says mayor, you know, Mayor Lord. And so they knew where the mayor was going to park. So they waited and then when the mayor showed up, then they attacked and threw microphones in her face, et cetera. So it's one of those things that never makes its way into an emergency operations plan because it's, it doesn't fit one of the ESF functions and it doesn't really fit one of the boxes in the org chart. But it is something that as council members, um, you know, we, we have to be aware of. And, and I think it's important for the city and the staff to really pay attention to how much information we're feeding the council. Um, they won't know who necessarily, other than the uniform, who the police chief or the fire chief is, but oftentimes they know who we are. So, um, as, I know you're in the process of revising it. I, I guess I'd just ask to take a look at some form of, of how do we keep that, how do we keep the council appraised? Because right now, you know, everything we do, we talk about policy level. But that's a real practical application to a non-policy issue.
Right.
So there's, there's some components that, uh, that I, I think fall outside of the plan. I guess just ask you to consider it as you're looking at your final revision before you get ready to revise it. I don't know.
Right, well done.
Councilman Holman?
I just wondered if there's been given any thought of what the private sector might have in these kinds of disasters? For example, a huge pileup where maybe water would be needed where locally we have, um, maybe distribution warehouse, whatever, that has ample water. Or in the case of a blackout, we would have, uh, uh, generators. Has there been given any thought to that as part of your emergency?
Councilmember Holman, yes, we have. We take that in consideration. Just very quickly, we had an issue, um, maybe a week or two ago in Park Shadows. And CTCA very willingly opened, uh, offered their, um, 20-passenger, um, vehicle bus, if you will, to move folks. And the church right across the street was willing to open up their doors because it was cold outside. So we have, um, but as far as large blocks of water and things like that, as a matter of fact, American Red Cross was on their way to bring those types of things for those folks. So we do have things in place, um, already, to answer your question.
Good. Joanne?
I'm sure you remember this, but a few years ago, you know, I, I took a, and this would be something that the entire council, well, except for maybe Bill. Would, he's probably already been through enough of the, of the emergency training. But, um, there was a, a fantastic, I think Homeland Security put it on. It was a, a two-day, um, emergency response type of, um, training for elected officials. And it really, um, I, I mean, I know I hammered you with pages of questions because it was so, so fascinating. And, and so it's something at the heart of us all of, you know, you know, we're blessed that we haven't had anything huge that has, has put us out there and, and not understanding. I think the, the key message coming home was, "Your incident commander is going to be trained for this." And, and, you know, we, we hope that we have the collaborations with our businesses that can, you know, I mean, they talked about, you know, the Home Depots and the Lowe's and, and the grocery stores and situations that occur where have you guys, your school districts, have you guys talked about, you know, those kinds of continual collaborations? And, um, and even though I, I trust that, that you have all these things in play, but it's nice when the council gets to hear, "Here's our annual conversation with these entities." So we always know the dialogue is, is going on. And, um, and to Bill's point about, you know, I would never in a million years believe that I should be the one trying to direct anybody. This is not what I, you know, I've been trained to do. This is certainly what the heads of these departments are trained to do and, and what you've been trained to do. But in reality, we are the ones that the public would be going, "What's going on?" And, and, and communication goes both ways. If we're not given enough, we're, we're stuck and we may say something wrong. It's probably better that you gave us too much than not enough, that, you know, you're guestimating and then you say something wrong. And so, you know, I, I do, I do really have to say that of, I would never believe that we are supposed to, you know, dictate what's going on, but give us that information to be able to supply to our citizens, most importantly.
Thank you, Joanne, and thank you for your briefing tonight. I'm going to stop this now because we have to move to the dais. I really appreciate the information. And, and so, uh, are you, is, are you retiring from the city or are you just, this is your second job? Very quickly.
Very quickly.
Yes or no?
I will be resigning this year.
This year, okay. All right.
We don't have to say tonight.
No, 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 no. We have, we have some time.
So we actually get a double whammy. We get your prayers and we get your hard work.
Yes, you will always have the prayers.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.